Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. The time is now 7:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 28th, 2019 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the year 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners' meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in number provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. This, uh, what minutes? I see we have minutes for October 6th and October 20th of 2020.
I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
I see we have no communications or correspondence this evening. Uh, we have no proclamations, uh, but we do have a need to go into executive session, so...
Mayor, before we do that, I just need to put on the record, Ro Costa.
I'm sorry?
Can I take 30 seconds to do Ro Costa on the record, uh, now?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Do it now.
Just for the, for the record, uh, between now and our next meeting, uh, we need to process bills associated with, uh, CARES Act reimbursement and FEMA. Uh, we need to just recognize on the record that we will allow, uh, the CFO to process those payments, uh, prior to our next meeting and that they will be ratified on the, at the December 15th meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. I will now entertain a motion to go into executive. Madam Clerk, move it.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to move into closed executive session to discuss potential litigation, be it further resolved at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The time is 7:08.
Okay, if there's any member of the public here, uh, that needs to step out, I don't see anyone.
Sally.
Okay, we are back on the record. I apologize for that, once again, lengthy executive session, but unfortunately, it was very necessary. Clarification on many different issues. So we are up to reports on our agenda. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. I have various monthly reports for Department of Public Works.
Great, thank you. Bills?
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for December 1, 2020, Public Affairs, $35,503.04. Revenue and Finance, $2,711,743.39. Public Safety, $137,018.61. Public Works, $16,416.83. Parks and Public Properties, $668,264.27. Water Utility, $25,110.99. Payroll, regular payroll, $811,274.36. Overtime payroll, $50,425.30. COVID overtime payroll, $13,626.58. Total payroll, $875,326.24. For grand total, $4,469,383.37.
Who are the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We will now entertain public comment on agenda items only, please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mayor Tucci, I believe this resolution's 286 and 287-20. I believe that's on the agenda for this evening. Do you have it? You have any? You have block and lot numbers. Do you have any basic street addresses or which side of town that's on?
This is the Chickalini property, Mr. Moore, and it's also all of the properties from High Street down to Breland. So the one resolution addresses an area declared in need of redevelopment. That would be the Chickalini property that the township owns. And all of the other properties would be designated as an area in need of rehabilitation.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't a few meetings ago, didn't you authorize, the BOC authorize money for the planning board for other planning? For Diamond Springs and the Chickalini building? Is that the same? Or was that separate?
Yes, it is the same process.
Okay, because I was just curious why Diamond Springs wasn't included in this. That's, that was my curiosity.
Hopefully, well, I hope I satisfied your question. You have another question or you're good?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. There's no one else? Okay, we will move to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Scarpelli, any announcements?
Yes, I do, Mayor. There will be Electronics Recycling Day on this Saturday, December 5th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. It'll be contactless. If you have any electronics that need to be recycled, please put them in your trunk. There will be no interaction with anybody or going into anybody's car. So pop the trunk and we'll take it out or have it in the back of a pickup and it'll be taken out and recycled. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great, that's a very efficient process you have working there, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Petracco?
I just have one announcement, even though it's on the agenda. I'd just like to congratulate Henry Miola, although we're going to vote on it to a resolution tonight, to appoint him to volunteer chief's position. It's a Nutley tradition that's been here a long time where the chief's position is on the volunteer side and the paid position is the deputy chief. I'm very confident moving forward that Henry Miola has a lot of energy, could up our volunteerism in town, hopefully, because more than ever, we could use it. You know, especially with the fire department. So I'm just very pleased to announce tonight that we're going to be voting on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements. The first is I wanted to announce that the Nutley Public Affairs and Health Department will be providing non-rapid PCR COVID testing to all Nutley residents and employees. It will be taking place Tuesday, December 8th, and Wednesday, December 9th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be at the Parks and Rec Building, so thank you, Mayor, for volunteering your building. It's going to be by appointment only, so please have your insurance information ready and you can call the Nutley Health Department at 973-284-4976 to make appointments for the COVID testing to take place later this month. And on that note, I just want to urge everyone, if you do have a positive COVID test, don't get on a plane, go travel somewhere, don't visit loved ones, don't go to the grocery store, don't come home from college, stay in the COVID positive dorm. And I use those examples not because they're some far-off examples. They're examples that the Health Department nurses have told me that Nutley residents have done after they receive a positive COVID test. This is a very serious disease and it's important that if you have a positive test result, that you do the necessary quarantining to not only protect yourself, your family and your loved ones, but the general public. We're seeing an uptick in cases and part of that is because people are not being vigilant, they're not following the protocols, and they're doing something like getting on a plane and traveling. Not only is that irresponsible and completely selfish in terms of your relationship to the public, but it also creates more work for the Health Department. Because when that happens, the Health Department then has to contact the airlines, let them know that they had a COVID positive person on the flight, and then that the airline has then go and contact everyone who was around that person and tell them they have to go get a COVID test. So please, if you do have a positive test result, stay home, quarantine. I understand the holidays are coming up. It's going to be much better if you just miss one holiday with a family or friend than if you miss a lifetime of holidays because you infected them and they weren't able to survive the disease. So please, if you do have a positive test result, please follow the appropriate protocols and take instructions from your doctor and your healthcare officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very important information you're passing on. I have several announcements this evening and not necessarily in any given order, but first, I'd like to congratulate the Nutley High School varsity football team for their victory over our archrival Belleville, 42-7. Very convincing and very definitive victory we had there. And also on their undefeated season, I believe the first time since 1939 or somewhere in that area. So they're all to be congratulated. And more importantly, the way that our youngsters and our coaching staff and our A.D. and the administration conducted themselves. I was very proud to witness how they acted on the field and off the field and just as a little extra, I guess, pleasure for the Mayor. This is also the Mayor's Cup, so I was very happy to receive that trophy from Mayor Melham of Belleville and presented to Coach De Gregorio. So congratulations once again to our Nutley High School football team. Outstanding season. I'd also like to thank everyone in the Township of Nutley and all of the Commissioners. We put out a call for additional turkeys for needy folks in town who could have used a little assistance this Thanksgiving. And through the Family Service Bureau, when we first started, they were about 60 turkeys short. While I'm happy to report that we not only satisfied all of the Family Service Bureau needs in making sure that no one goes hungry in Nutley, but we also had an additional 50 turkeys that we were able to donate to St. Mary's for needy folks in town. So I want to thank everyone for that. I'd also like to thank, for those of you that have noticed, and it's hard not to notice, I'd like to thank my Parks Department for decorating the mud hole all the way, Memorial Park one coming out all the way to Chestnut Street, for the outstanding job they did on lighting up all of the poles. It's like a winter wonderland. If you haven't seen it yet, you haven't walked through, please do so. I say it time and time again, but I have to because it's true. I'm a very fortunate man because I have great people that I work with who come up with great ideas to make Nutley the great town that it is. And in this environment, I think it was extra important, all right, to lift everyone's spirits. So thank you, Parks Department. I know Frank DeMayo is here this evening, once again, representing the men and women, and I just want you to know what an outstanding job he did. And that's all I have for announcements right now. And no one else? Then Commissioner, want to say something?
Yeah, one more side note about testing positive. If you test positive and you don't have symptoms, that does not mean you're any less deadly or any less contagious. Or if you have symptoms and don't have a fever, that doesn't mean that you're not any less deadly or any less contagious. There's more symptoms than just fever. It includes diarrhea, it includes coughing, includes any other type of illness or symptom you may encounter, say, with the common cold or the flu. It's not exclusively just a fever. So just because you have limited symptoms or no symptoms does not mean you're any less contagious or deadly with the coronavirus. So please, I cannot stress this enough, listen to your doctors and your healthcare providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see we have no ordinance this evening for introduction, but we do have three on second reading. First ordinance, 3461, sponsored by Commissioner Kelly. I will open up the public hearing for comment. Seeing none, I want to take a motion to close the public hearing.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. This is on the nurse. I just want to find out, what is the actual salary? I see the salary range, but what is the salary?
Commissioner, would you like to respond?
The salary will be raised to $70,000 per year.
The reason I'm asking is recently I asked as an open request, and I did receive a response, for the current salaries for all employees, and your department was absent from that. And so the current, she's going to go to 70%? 70,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to be heard on this ordinance? No one else? Want to take a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Need a motion?
I move the ordinance.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you. Next ordinance on second reading is ordinance 3462, sponsored by Commissioner Petracco. I will open up the public hearing for comment. No comment? Move to close? Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you. Next ordinance also belongs to Commissioner Petracco, ordinance number 3463. I will open up the public hearing for comment. Seeing none? Move to close?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance, please.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will move into resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. The first resolution I have on for tonight is for the contract that we do every year with the ARC. It's for $1,000 and the funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The second one, resolution that I have on for this evening, is a contract with Nutley Family Service Bureau. For their services, they provide the town to include food pantry services and their general services. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The third resolution I have on this evening is for an agreement between Northwest Essex Community Healthcare Network and the Township. They provide services to the Township to include counseling for veteran services. And I can report and attest that that is a very helpful service for our veterans. So I want to thank them for all they do for us. And this is a contract for $20,000. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I abstained.
The next resolution I have is, it's going to be a little bit slightly amended from what was put out, so I'm going to read through it. It's a resolution for a budget transfer. The garbage and trash removal account, it's going to be amended from $60,000 to a $30,000 total to move to the salaries account. a thirty thousand dollar total to move to the salaries account. It's, that's going to be amended from a fifty thousand to a twenty thousand dollar total amount. And then all, ten thousand of the other thirty thou, the, the remaining ten thousand will go to the animal control account for, for the total of thirty thousand dollars. So again, that's the garbage and trash removal account number zero, zero, one, one, three, eight, two, oh, nine. Total of thirty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand to health department, zero, zero, one, 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 zero, one hundred. And animal control, ten thousand total there, zero, zero, one, one, thirty-four, two hundred. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And then this, the next one and my last one for this evening, I have the distinct honor and privilege to bring forth a resolution to wish the United States Space Force its first happy birthday. So whereas the United States Space Force, the USS FF, the USSF is a new branch of the Armed Forces. It was established on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen with the enactment of Fiscal Year twenty twenty National Defense Authorization Act. And it currently has sixteen thousand individuals assigned to the Space Force, which is an option given to Air Force cadets at the Air Force Academy as of two thousand nineteen. Whereas the primary mission of the US Space Force as directed by Congress is to maintain, protect and expand the US fleet of advanced military satellites that formed the backbone of the US global military operations. Whereas the USSF was established with the department of the air, within the Department of the Air Force where, where, meaning the Secretary of the Air Force has responsibility for the, the Space Force under the guidance of the Secretary of Defense. Additionally, a four-star general known as the Chief of the Space Operations serves as a senior military member of the Space Force. Whereas on September first, nineteen eighty-two, the US Air Force established the Air Force Space Command with the Space Operations as its primary mission. Cold War-era space operations focused on missile warning, launch operations, satellite control, space surveillance and command and control for national leadership. In nineteen ninety-one, Operation Desert Storm validated the Command's continuous focus on support to the warfighter throughout the use, throughout the use of GPS to enable the famous left hook, proving the value of space-based capabilities. Whereas after September eleventh terrorist attacks, after the September eleventh terrorist attacks, the President directed military action against Afghanistan and Iraq. The Air Force Base Command provided extensive space-based support to US Central Command in areas of communications, positioning, navigation and timing, meteorology and warning. In two thousand five, the Air Force expanded its mission areas to include cyberspace. Whereas in July, two thousand eighteen, the Air Force cyber mission transferred to the Air Combatant Command, which generated the greatest capacity for integrated information warfare capability within the Air Force. This move has allowed the Air Force Space Command to focus on gaining and maintaining space superiority, outpacing our adverse adversaries in the space domain. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, thank our Nutley members of the Space Force and recognize and celebrates the United States Space Force on its first birthday. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracco.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas NJSA forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven provides for the Director of Division of Local Government Services, may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items show have been made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Not to be redundant, this is our, our drive sober or get pulled over grant, it's six for six thousand dollars. I'm going to move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you. Whereas approximately one-third of all fatal traffic crashes in the United States involve impaired drivers. And whereas impaired driving crashes kills ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one people in the United States in two thousand eighteen. And whereas impaired driving crashes cost the United States almost forty-four billion dollars a year. And that's not to mention the loss of life. Whereas during the past five years, New Jersey roadways experienced thirty-six thousand forty, forty-nine crashes and six hundred and forty-eight fatalities involving impaired drivers. When you really look at that, that's astonishing when you really read that. Thirty-six thousand crashes, six hundred and forty-eight fatalities. Whereas an enforcement crackdown is planned to combat impaired driving. And whereas the year-end holiday season is traditionally timed for social gatherings, which include alcohol. Whereas the state of New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety has asked law enforcement agencies throughout the state to participate in drive sober, get pulled over two thousand, two thousand year, two thousand twenty-year end holiday crackdown. And whereas the project will involve increased impaired driving enforcement from December fourth, two thousand twenty through January first, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the increase in impaired driver enforcement and reduction in impaired driving will save lives on our roadway. Now therefore be resolved by the township of Nutley, declares its support for the drive sober, get pulled over two thousand twenty-year-end holiday crackdown from December fourth, two thousand twenty, through January first, two thousand one, and pledges to increase awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that Henry Miola, sixty-two Ridge Road, Nutley, New Jersey, be appointed Chief of the Fire, Nutley Fire Department for a two-year term from December first, two thousand twenty through December first, two thousand twenty-two. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Commissioner Petracco, I just want to confirm that that's a typo on the fire department? Rescue, you meant the rescue squad?
No, this is for the fire department.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
It is.
Yeah, I just want to say that I completely support the pick. I think you did a great job with this pick and I think, I, I know Henry and I think he'll do a great job as well. So I fully support it with an aye.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Congratulations, Henry.
Mayor Tucci.
I vote aye, and I'd like to commend Commissioner Petracco on the selection. I think Henry is the right man at the right time for this job. Excellent selection.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to read this next one by title. It's Resolution two ninety-seven dash twenty. This is our mutual agreement with all other town, well, all our surrounding towns. Authorizing membership in, in a mutual and a, and assistance agreement with the township of Nutley, the township of Bellevue, and the township of Boonefield during a state of emergency, a declared public health emergency or any presidential declared disaster. I move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Petracco.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
I know you were busy there for a moment. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the township of Nutley through the Department of Public Works has a need to acquire the services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four, A dash forty point five or twenty point five as appropriate. Whereas the engineering coordinator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate service provided by the vendor for the term of this contract will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for twelve months from January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas Penone Associates, twenty-four comma Street, North New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide engineering services according to a fee schedule attached. And whereas Penone Associates has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Penone Associates from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas the contract does not exceed a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for general engineering services, whereas funds are billed from account number one, oh, one, four, oh, four, two hundred, and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, and will be subject to the adoption, adoption of the two thousand twenty-one budget, and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, enter into contract with Penone Associates described herein. And be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once and then at least in accordance with the local public contracts, will move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas the township of Nutley announces free two-hour needed parking on Saturday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, in support of Small Business Saturday, and from December first, two thousand twenty, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. And whereas the suspension of metered parking during the holiday is a Nutley tradition to promote our business district, district and support local merchants. And whereas the free two-hour parking will allow ample time for residents to take opportunity to leisurely walk and shop Nutley first. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, will allow free two-hour metered parking on Saturday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, and from December first, two thousand twenty through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
I think this is one of the, well, we have so many great traditions, but this is one of our, our best traditions, and I think it's, it's even more appropriate this year given the, the coronavirus impact that have been facing our small businesses. So I vote aye, and I, I hope everyone can take advantage of this and patronize our, our merchants.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Being a small business owner in town, I kind of hate to comment on things like this, but I have to tell you, it's very, very important and thank God we had a, a very good year. So I'm not speaking for myself, but it is very, very important to shop local. A lot of these stores in Nutley are really struggling, some of our clothing store, jewelry stores, things like that, that I've rented to people, you know? It seems like the food stores are kind of holding on there. But if you can shop locally this Saturday, it would be a big help to everyone. Thank you. And I vote aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Yeah, before I vote on this, I just want to tell the public that this is actually an extra two weeks that we're doing in December, and that's related mostly to the, what's going on in, with COVID and the economic climate. So we're doing the whole month of December, where usually we do the last couple of weeks of December. So we're extending that in, in response to what's going on. And hopefully this will help people shop locally and visit our merchants. So I vote aye.
Mayor Tucci.
I'd also like to commend Commissioner Scarpelli. This is a wonderful tradition we have here, and I know your department over the years has, has, has come through for our local businesses. Also being a local business owner, close to the outskirts of town at the end of Passaic Avenue, but nonetheless, it absolutely has an impact. And I'd also like to commend you because for the first time, I used my credit cards on one of your new meters and it was a pleasure. So I very proudly vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. One more resolution. Whereas pursuant to NJSA forty, colon, sixty-seven, dash, twenty-three point two, as required by law, the township has elected to provide municipal services to the Cambridge Heights at the Nutley Umbrella Association in the same manner as the township provides such services on public roads and streets. And the township now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley and the County of Essex as follows. One, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a two thousand twenty-one municipal service agreement with the association in a form approved by the township attorney. And two, a copy of the resolution as well as a municipal service agreement shall be placed on file with the clerk, and a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley sun. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
So I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley declaring certain, a certain area located along Franklin Avenue and shown on the official tax map of the township of Nutley as block thirty-one hundred, lots twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-seven, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. This is for those of you who don't recognize these block and lot numbers, this is basically the Chickolini property. So I move this resolution as written. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
My second resolution this evening is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley declaring property identified as block thirty-one hundred, lots twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-one through thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two and forty-three on the official tax map of the township of Nutley as an area in need of rehabilitation in accordance with provisions of the local redevelopment and housing law. This resolution encompasses all of the other properties from High Street to Breland Avenue. I move the resolution as written. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
I just have a clarification on the west side.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Petracco.[1531.13]